Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a esta reunión regularmente programada. Mi nombre es Barbara Johnson, presidenta del Consejo de la Ciudad. Antes de empezar, tenemos un par de invitados especiales para honrar esta mañana. Vamos a comenzar con los de la conciencia de cáncer de ovario. Si se acercan aquí, estaría genial. Vayan a la cámara, para que todos estén en cámara. Tenemos invitados para acompañarnos. Tenemos una resolución del Consejo de la Ciudad declarando que el mes de cáncer de ovario es el de Minneapolis. Voy a pasar brevemente la resolución y dejar algunas referencias aquí. Es el 9º caso de cáncer más común entre las mujeres. 22,000 nuevos casos cada año. El cáncer de ovario es el 5º causante de muerte relacionada con el cáncer en mujeres de 35 a 74 años. Diagnóstico, y creo que esto es algo que es un gran desafío, que no tienes muchos síntomas, y así la diagnóstico no ocurre hasta que hay veces que se avance. Y es entonces uno de los más letales cánceres ginecologicos. Así que 400 mujeres en Minnesota serán diagnosticadas y 260 mujeres en Minnesota morirán de la enfermedad este año. Y la mayoría debido a la tarde diagnosis, el 45% de las mujeres mueren dentro de cinco años de su diagnóstico. Es curable cuando se reconoce temprano y el 92% de las mujeres sobrevive más de cinco años si la enfermedad es detectada y tratada correctamente antes de que se espalde. Así que tenemos ante nosotros una resolución declarando que el mes de cáncer de ovario es el de Minneapolis en la ciudad de Minneapolis y que el 35W Bridge sea pintado en azul, que es el color de este movimiento, el jueves de septiembre 1, en honor del trabajo de la Alianza de Cáncer de Minnesota para aumentar la conciencia, proporcionar apoyo y financiar la investigación de cáncer de ovario. Así que gracias por acompañarnos y me gustaría decir unas palabras. Introduzcanse.
Soy June Miller. Soy June Miller y soy afortunada lo suficiente para ser una superviviente de 17 años. No todos son tan afortunados. Como has dicho, las estadísticas no son buenas, así que esta proclamación va a ayudar mucho a aumentar la conciencia que necesitamos.
Soy Kathleen Gavin. Soy la directora ejecutiva de la Alianza de Cáncer de Ovario de Minnesota y estamos en la área de Glidden, la señora de la Cumbre de la Cumbre de la Ciudad. Estamos en la 46ª de Chicago. Mantenemos un oficina allí que está abierta al público y estamos aquí para todos los ciudadanos de Minneapolis y Minnesota. A todos los afectados por la enfermedad, estamos contentos de ayudar de cualquier manera que podamos. Fundamos investigaciones sobre el cáncer de ovario. Ha dado 6 millones de dólares para la investigación y apoyamos a las mujeres y familias afectadas por la enfermedad. Así que gracias por dar la oportunidad de traer este importante tema ante el Consejo.
Muchas gracias por acompañarnos esta mañana. Aquí está su resolución. La pasaré más tarde en nuestra agenda.
Gracias.
Gracias. También tenemos a la cumbre de la Cumbre de la Ciudad, Kano, que va a acompañarme. El placer de presentar a un nuevo consejero general para nuestro país vecino, México, que está aquí por una ocasión muy especial. Así que voy a pasar esto a la cumbre de la Cumbre de la Ciudad, si puede negociarse su camino a través de las cámaras aquí. Pero tenemos una relación maravillosa a través de nuestro consejero general a través de los años con México y también tenemos una gran relación ciudad-hermana. Así que vamos a celebrar ambas cosas hoy.
Absolutamente. Gracias, presidente de la Cumbre. Y si me permite, pedimos a nuestro invitado especial que por favor se acerque y se una a nosotros. Tendremos al Sr. Manuel Manrique Zapata y a su esposa. Por favor, vengan al frente de la habitación y podemos tener a los... tal vez que usted se ponga justo al lado del presidente de la Cumbre en este lado, por favor. Y luego tendremos a nuestros miembros del comité ciudadano de Cuernavaca, nuestra coche de la Cumbre Ana Columba y señora Victorina y don Loreto, que forman parte del comité activo. Y nuestra cumbre mexicana, el Sr. Guerrero, por favor, se unan a nosotros y tal vez tome un lugar junto al esposo de Manuel Manrique Zapata. Así que este es un evento muy importante para la comunidad mexicana aquí en Minneapolis y nacional. Tenemos el gran honor de tener uno de los miembros sobrevivientes y carregadores de la historia y legado de la revolución mexicana. Así que hoy leeremos una resolución honrando ese legado y es similar a tener descendientes de George Washington entre nosotros. Eso es lo que significa para la comunidad mexicana, tener nuestra comunidad representada aquí con eso. Así que gracias, presidente de la Cumbre. Appreciamos su apoyo. Así que esta es una resolución del alcalde y del Consejo de la Ciudad declarando que es el día de Emiliano Zapata. Mientras Emiliano Zapata Salazar, nacido en una familia indígena y española en Anenecuilco, Morelos, México, en 1879, es reconocido como héroe nacional de la revolución mexicana que duró desde 1910 a 1920. Mientras Zapata capturó los corazones y mentes del pueblo mexicano que vivió en severa pobreza y bajo la represión del dictador militar Porfirio Díaz, que durante más de tres décadas gobernó el país. Mientras Zapata mismo fue un agricultor que luchó por la justicia social y reforma de la tierra, coñeciendo la famosa frase: "La tierra pertenece a aquellos que la tira". Y mientras Minneapolis se ha convertido en casa de cientos de personas del estado de Morelos, con el número más alto proveniente de la ciudad de Asochapan. Y mientras Cuernavaca, la capital de Morelos, se convirtió en ciudad hermana de Minneapolis en 2008. Mientras Plaza Centenario, ubicado en East Lake Street y 12ª Avenida, posee una escultura de la imagen icónica de Emiliano Zapata, que fue un regalo del estado de Morelos y adorado a Minneapolis por el Club Cuernavaca Asochapan Morelos y nuestro comité ciudadano de Cuernavaca. Mientras el establecimiento de Plaza Centenario, la mayor comunidad latina de Minneapolis, proporciona una oportunidad para todos los residentes de aprender sobre la historia y la importancia de Emiliano Zapata, celebrando la relación entre México y los Estados Unidos en general y Minneapolis y Morelos específicamente. Mientras el sábado 6 de agosto de 2016, el Sr. Isaías Manuel Manrique Zapata, que es el suegro de Emiliano Zapata, vendrá a Minneapolis a celebrar lo que habría sido el 137º año de nacimiento de Emiliano Zapata con una celebración de comunidad en Plaza Centenario. Ahora, por lo tanto, que se resuelva por el Consejo de la Ciudad de la Ciudad de Minneapolis que el primer sábado de agosto de 2016 será conocido como el día de Emiliano Zapata. Y ahora tendremos a nuestra cumbre de la Cumbre decir unas palabras y luego nos pasará a nuestros invitados para cerrar nuestra presentación.
Muchas gracias, Alondra. Distinguido Betsy Koch, alcalde de la Ciudad de Minneapolis; Barbara Johnson, presidenta del Consejo de la Ciudad de Minneapolis; Alondra Kano, miembro de la Cumbre representando la Guardia Nacional; Bill Deff, de Minneapolis; señor Manuel Manrique Zapata, nieto del general Emiliano Zapata, honorarios de organizaciones y asistencia. Es un honor para mí participar por primera ocasión como cumbre de México en Minnesota en un aniversario más del natalicio del general Emiliano Zapata Salazar. Es un honor para mí participar por primera vez como cumbre de México en Minnesota en esta ceremonia en honor del general Emiliano Zapata Salazar. Emiliano Zapata, noveno hijo de una humilde familia campesina, era poseedor de un considerable carisma entre sus vecinos por su moderación y confianza en sí mismo. Pasaba por ser el mejor domador de caballos de la comarca y muchas haciendas se lo disputaban. A los 30 años de edad fue electo como presidente del nuevo consejo municipal de Anenecuilco, su lugar de nacimiento. Como presidente del consejo municipal, Emiliano Zapata comenzó a tratar con intelectuales capitalinos para hacer valer los derechos de la propiedad de sus paisanos. Tal actividad no pasó desapercibida y posiblemente a causa de ello el ejército lo llamó a filas. De regreso a Morelos, Zapata retomó la defensa de las tierras comunales en Anenecuilco. Se había iniciado un juicio con la hacienda del hospital y los campesinos no podían sembrar en las tierras en litigio hasta que los tribunales resolvieran. Emiliano Zapata tomó su primera decisión drástica. Al frente de un pequeño grupo armado ocupó las tierras del hospital y las repartió entre los campesinos. Como jefe supremo del movimiento revolucionario del sur, rango que le fue designado en 1911, tomó la ciudad de Cuautla, punto de partida para extender su poder por el estado. Y procedió a repartir las tierras en las zonas que controlaba. Zapata elaboró en noviembre de 1913 el Plan de Ayala, en el cual, entre otras cosas, anunciaba la expropiación de un tercio de las tierras de los terratenientes a cambio de una compensación si se aceptaba y por la fuerza en caso contrario. Los que se sumaron a este plan enlazaron la bandera de la reforma agraria. En 1914, Emiliano Zapata, después de su rompimiento con Francisco Villa, se retira a Morelos y concentra ahí su acción en la reconstrucción de su estado, que vivió 18 meses de auténtica paz y revolución agraria. El aporte de algunos intelectuales dio solidez ideológica al movimiento agrarista y ello permitió a los zapatistas organizar administrativamente el espacio que controlaban. En este sentido, el gobierno de Zapata en el estado de Morelos creó comisiones agrarias, estableció la primera entidad de crédito agrario en México e intentó convertir la industria del azúcar y de Morelos en una cooperativa. Zapata llevó a la práctica un conjunto de avanzadas medidas agrarias y sociales, tanto para incrementar su base en Morelos como para buscar apoyos en el resto de México. Emiliano Zapata fue asesinado en 1919, pero sus principios y legado aún están vivos. Tal vez el quinto punto de su legado sea que Zapata se identifique como un líder auténtico del pueblo, que nunca ha engañado sus principios, ni del pueblo, que fue la razón de sus luchas. Con la idea de luchar por el pueblo y no por el interés popular, Zapata fue capaz de concentrarse en su plan de Ayala, en las demandas básicas del pueblo mexicano: tierra y libertad. Under este slogan muy simple pero muy poderoso, las demandas del pueblo mexicano fueron sintetizadas. Muchas ofertas fueron hechas a Emiliano Zapata, pero nunca negociaron y es por eso que su legado sigue siendo poderoso después de casi 100 años de su muerte. Emiliano Zapata es un ejemplo de la magnificencia del pueblo mexicano. El pueblo mexicano es dueño de altos estándares de principios morales, de lealtad y de gran nobleza. Es necesario, es obligatorio reconocer las grandes contribuciones que los inmigrantes mexicanos han hecho a Estados Unidos y a su pueblo. Los inmigrantes mexicanos han sido trabajadores que vinieron a este país y que han sido un elemento importante para construir esta gran nación que son Estados Unidos. Ahora voy a hacer solo unos factores clave de la relación entre México y Minnesota y la contribución de los inmigrantes mexicanos a este estado. Minnesota y México son socios estratégicos y interdependientes. De acuerdo con el Departamento de Empleo y Desarrollo Económico, en 2015 México permaneció como el segundo mercado de Minnesota detrás de Canadá, importando 2.4 mil millones de productos minnesotanos. Pero además de la importancia del mercado mexicano para el sector de exportación de Minnesota, déjame mencionar la relevante contribución de la comunidad mexicana a la economía del estado. De acuerdo con el informe, el potencial económico de Minnesota y de origen mexicano, los minnesotanos de origen mexicano hacen significativas contribuciones económicas a la economía de este estado en los varios roles que juegan, es decir, como consumidores, trabajadores, empresarios, activos culturales y comerciales, líderes globales y contribuyentes. El informe dice que los minnesotanos de origen mexicano tienen un ingreso anual de 2.5 mil millones, lo que significa que la comunidad mexicana tiene un poder de gasto significativo como consumidores de bienes y servicios locales. Nuestro foro, de acuerdo con el mismo informe, el más de 80,000 trabajadores juega un papel crítico en varios sectores, particularmente construcción, agricultura, preparación de alimentos, empregados de paquete y servicios de recreo. Y servicios alimenticios, pero también en salud y asistencia social. Desde restaurantes de cocina de la calle Lake hasta médicos en Mayo Clinic, el papel del foro de origen mexicano es vital para la salud y la economía de Minnesota. Por eso y debido a muchas otras razones, no podemos aceptar cuando alguien dice que los inmigrantes mexicanos vienen a Estados Unidos para obtener empleos que son para estadounidenses y que los inmigrantes mexicanos son un negativo financiero a Estados Unidos y sus contribuyentes, o hacer declaraciones negativas o ofensivas. declaraciones generalizando que los mexicanos son criminales. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Y ahora tendremos algunas palabras cortas de nuestros invitados honrados aquí, Emiliano Zapata, Sr. Manuel Manrique Zapata.
Muy buenos días, estimada concurrencia. Un saludo primeramente a todos los miembros, a todos los concejales que están aquí presentes, a los amigos, a las personas que nos conocieron el año anterior, el año pasado, y que estuvieron aquí con nosotros en este mismo lugar para hacer... para dar una lectura de la resolución donde se dice que la primera semana de agosto va a ser el día cercano al 8 de agosto, que es la fecha original del nacimiento del general Zapata, va a ser el día de Zapata. Agradezco nuevamente la invitación que nos hacen las personas, los concejales, en este caso la señora Alondra Kano, para estar presente en esta conmemoración, que es el número 137 del natalicio del general Zapata. El señor cumbre acaba de hacer una relatoría sobre cuestiones importantes de la vida del general Emiliano Zapata. Debido al poco tiempo con que contamos, pues nomás voy a referirme a dos o tres situaciones que a lo mejor no se ha reflexionado muy bien sobre el actuar de Emiliano Zapata. Bueno, este... Emiliano Zapata fue el héroe más puro de la revolución que tuvo la necesidad y la oportunidad de combatir a cinco presidentes de la república. Sus ideas y sus postulados posteriormente quedaron plasmados en la Constitución de 1917 de México. Esperamos que el día de mañana este festejo, esta conmemoración, porque es el nacimiento de un personaje distinguido, que el destino le tenía preparado en su diario vivir, en su diario acontecer. Se puede decir que nació marcado por el destino para poder ayudar a su pueblo. Estamos muy agradecidos por la invitación y esperamos verlos a todos ustedes y a sus familiares el día de mañana a partir de las 12 horas. Muchas gracias por su atención. Vamos a hacer entrega de un cuadro, un reconocimiento del consejo, del patrimonio histórico de Cuautla. Este reconocimiento es a la ciudad de Minneapolis. Resaltando algunos de los objetivos del general Zapata. Pues es un gusto entregarlo, entregar ese reconocimiento y que pues quede en la memoria de aquí del consejo de que fue uno de los primeros reconocimientos que se le otorga a los concejales de esta hermosísima ciudad. Pues muchísimas gracias por su atención.
Gracias.
Voy a llamar a esta reunión regularmente programada del Consejo de la Ciudad de Minneapolis para ordenar. Un fiscal llame a la orden.
Miembro de la Cumbre de la Ciudad Bender. Glidden.
Sí.
Yang.
Sí.
Johnson.
Sí.
Quincy.
Sí.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Sí.
Palmasano.
Sí.
Gordon.
Sí.
Kano.
Sí.
Wright.
Sí.
President Johnson.
Sí.
Hay 13 miembros presentes.
Tenemos a todos los miembros presentes esta mañana. El siguiente tema en la agenda es la adopción de la agenda. Así que se ha movido.
Madam presidenta, me gustaría cambiar la agenda. En frente de usted es un nuevo tema de negocio, número 2, respecto a las ordenas de atenuación de ruido de aviones.
La cumbre de la Cumbre de la Ciudad Quincy ha cambiado la agenda para incluir bajo nuevo negocio una notificación de intención para introducir una orden que incluye un capítulo nuevo titulado "Atenuación de ruido de aviones". ¿Hay un segundo?
Segundo.
¿Algún debate? Si no, todos en aprobación, decir aye.
Aye.
Oposición, que lleva. ¿Algunos otros amendos a la agenda? Si no, un fiscal llama a la orden. La agenda se ha cambiado.
Miembro de la Cumbre de la Ciudad Bender.
Sí.
Glidden.
Sí.
Yang.
Sí.
Johnson.
Sí.
Quincy.
Sí.
Worsami.
Sí.
Goodman.
Sí.
Fry.
Sí.
Palmasano.
Sí.
Gordon.
Sí.
Kano.
Sí.
Wright.
Sí.
President Johnson.
Sí.
Esta medida es aprobada. Siguiente, tenemos la aceptación de los minutos de la reunión regular de julio 22, 2016.
Así que se ha movido.
Segundo.
Los minutos se han movido y secundados. ¿Algún debate? Si no, todos en aprobación, decir aye.
Aye.
Oposición, que lleva. Siguiente, son las refiradas de peticiones, comunicaciones y informes a los comités adecuados.
Se ha movido.
¿Algún debate? Si no, todos en aprobación, decir aye.
Aye.
Oposición, que lleva. Siguiente, son los informes de los comités de puesta en marcha y el primero es el comité del todo y ese comité es dirigido por el vicepresidente de la Cumbre, Elizabeth Glidden.
Gracias, madam presidenta. Hay tres temas en la agenda de hoy y les leeré todos. Hay un cambio en lo que ven en la agenda imprimida, en el tema número 2. Así que el primero es la petición para cambiar el charter de la ciudad para el salario mínimo y eso incluye el paso de una resolución concurriendo en los hallazgos legales del abogado de la ciudad que el objeto de la petición por un salario mínimo no es una orden de charter adecuada y dirigiendo al fiscal de la ciudad no a transmitir la pregunta al auditor del condado. Dos, aprobar el lenguaje de las elecciones para enviar la propuesta de salario mínimo de 15 dólares por hora a la audiencia como parte de las elecciones generales de 2016. Y tres, dirigir el oficio del coordinador de la ciudad a trabajar con los intereses de los intereses de otras ciudades, revisar y incorporar los resultados del estudio de salario mínimo recién llegado y recomendar una política de salario mínimo para traer al comité del todo en el segundo trimestre de 2017 y formular un plan de participación para traer al comité del todo o antes de 5 de octubre de 2016, con la firma temprana del alcalde solicitado para este tema en total. El tema número 2 es la petición para cambiar el charter de la ciudad respecto a la seguridad profesional de la responsabilidad policial. Incluye el paso de una resolución concurriendo en los hallazgos legales del abogado de la ciudad que el objeto de la petición por la seguridad profesional de la responsabilidad policial no es una orden de charter adecuada y dirigiendo al fiscal de la ciudad no a transmitir la pregunta al auditor del condado. En el paquete que está ante ustedes y para aquellos que están aquí, hay algunos extras aquí, simplemente olvidamos aprobar el lenguaje de las elecciones en nuestra reunión de miércoles. Y lo que estoy moviendo para ustedes, el lenguaje de las elecciones draft, es un lenguaje que ha sido discutido tanto con el comité como con el abogado de la ciudad. Es muy diferente del lenguaje que se discutió el miércoles, que no votamos. Y los cambios, solo para alertar, están en el título. Así que el título ahora leería: "Propuesta para cambiar el charter de la Ciudad de Minneapolis para que los oficiales policiales mantengan la seguridad de la responsabilidad" y eso sigue el lenguaje y la pregunta completa que se presentó cuando se reunieron. Y luego en el lenguaje por debajo de eso, en la descripción más completa que estaría allí, hay el lenguaje que se usa como "tener y mantener a los policías de Minneapolis a tener y mantener cobertura continua". Así que como quizás recuerden, discutimos las opciones de palabras diferentes como "comprar" y "obtener" y terminamos trabajando con el comité para tener algún lenguaje que el abogado de la ciudad también está de acuerdo. Así que eso es, estoy moviendo eso y similar a lo que pasó en el tema, el tema encima, sería aprobar ese lenguaje de las elecciones para enviar la propuesta de seguridad policial a la audiencia como parte de las elecciones generales de 2016. Y también la firma temprana del alcalde solicitada. El último tema es planificación de la fuerza laboral estratégica y esto sería aprobar los objetivos de representación de la fuerza laboral empresarial de contratación del 41% de la fuerza laboral de la ciudad como personas de color por 2022 y el 45% de la fuerza laboral de la ciudad como mujeres por 2022, y luego dirigir al Departamento de Rесصات Humanas en conjunción con la tecnología de información para desarrollar un sitio web que incluirá tablas de trabajo trimestrales y planes de oportunidades de empleo anual de igualdad de empleo y reportar al comité del todo al final del primer trimestre de 2017 el progreso de esos temas. Y movería todos los tres temas, aunque quizás quisiéramos tomarlos separadamente.
La cumbre de la Cumbre de Glidden ha movido el informe del comité del todo en su totalidad. ¿Alguien quiere discutir alguno de esos temas? Miembro de la Cumbre de la Ciudad Kano.
Gracias, madam presidenta. Me gustaría hablar de los temas número uno...
I would like to speak to items number one, the petition to amend the city charter on minimum wage, and item number two, the petition to amend the city charter to allow the ballot question for police professional liability insurance, although I realize that the direction here is not to approve that. So first of all, I want to thank our community members who have worked so hard over the last couple of years to raise the visibility and the importance of the economic justice conversation around wages in our city and around the future of our city. Because only by achieving an equitable city where community members can make a living and pay their bills can we really ensure that our city will be successful. And I am going to vote against both of these issues today because I disagree with the legal opinion of the city. I believe that both of these charter amendments via ballot questions should be forwarded to our residents, and I believe that there is legal room for that to happen. And I believe that we need to support our Minneapolis residents to have that conversation and to also ask, you know, the courts to take a look at the issue if there are indeed questions about the legality of these charter amendments. Thousands of people entrusted me with their vote to represent them on the city council, and in return, I entrust you with a vote on these two issues. And I believe after reading all the legal positions on these two items that we do have the room to make these issues fit in our charter. And the minimum wage specifically is a very important issue that we know today has to move forward with or without a charter amendment. And I think some of the actions in today's council will reflect that there is a majority of council members who want to raise the wage, and I think it's very important for us who come from low-income communities, who come from immigrant communities, who come from communities that are directly impacted by labor exploitation, wage theft, you know, in situations where we find ourselves trying to figure out how to make ends meet for our family to ensure that that conversation of $15 an hour never goes away. So with that, I do want to speak to the issue of the police professional liability insurance. And as some of you know, I was on the Minnesota Public Radio talking about it yesterday, and I am not confident that the charter amendment is illegal, and therefore I feel completely in my full right and responsibility as a council member to allow that to move forward. I understand that I am in the minority on that vote, and I think that it's important to acknowledge that from my perspective, this issue does become a very appropriate issue in our charter, and that it's certainly within our powers to regulate and oversee our employees. And of course, Minneapolis officers are part of that mix. And I think this is a common sense approach issue. I think many of our police officers are doing a wonderful job of providing safety and security to our community members. I regularly meet with our third precinct inspector and the beat officers in the third precinct, and I am more than thankful for all the amazing work that they do to build relationships with businesses, to show up to all the community meetings, to come out to National Night Out, and to respond to issues that are happening, whether it's at 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM, or midnight, when I get the text messages from our inspectors. And so with that, I want to say that this initiative for me is about supporting those officers to do a good job, to continuing to provide a culture of police accountability where no police officer has to find themselves coming home to their wife saying, "Honey, I shot somebody and killed somebody today." Nobody should ever be in that position. And I don't think that this is an initiative that is meant to punish anybody. This is actually a tool that we need, that should move forward with all the other tools that we're trying to move forward, to uproot the negative legacies of slavery and colonization from our policing systems, which we are bringing light to today. So I want to say finally that. Another reason why I'm voting for this is because she is made of diamonds. She is four years old and wears pink and blue beads sometimes, barrettes in her braided hair, maybe chewing bubble gum is her favorite, and possibly she likes the swings best of all at the park. Her voice certainly glitters. Her voice has always glittered. It has never needed your permission or invitation or your blessing. Last Wednesday night, she sat buckled in the car's backseat on the way home from the grocery store. Maybe she was chewing bubble gum. Her bedtime routine most likely would have been next in order of the weeknight things. But a nearby police car slowed its suburban patrol. When the car she was riding in passed, one of the officers noticed how the other car's driver had a wide-set nose, and he fit the description. In less than two minutes, she listened. As police officers pulled the car she was riding in over and give orders, she saw the driver and her mother follow those orders. Might be the officer now pointing his gun at the driver, didn't see her in the backseat. He therefore never would have noticed the colorful beads in her hair. He definitely knew nothing about the driver, a man who just shopped for groceries, a man who just had a family dinner and got his haircut earlier that evening. In less than two minutes, she, four years old, watched one of the police officers shoot the driver again and again, then begin screaming at her mother. It must have felt like forever. The driver fit the description. He was following orders. He was not the man. Make no mistake, she still has a glittering voice. Possibly it won't shine as bright for a minute. Certainly, it glittered as clear and big as it could for her mother while fear worked a crooked mess last Wednesday night. Her voice a devotional from the car's backseat. "It's okay, mommy. I'm right here with you." She is made of diamonds, a poem by Vanessa Fuentes for Philando Diamond, Indiana. This is what we, as city council members, can do today to help create a culture of police accountability, and that's why I will be voting against our legal opinion to not forward this as a ballot question.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. On Wednesday, when we had this item before us, I abstained from the vote because I didn't have a chance with National Night Out beforehand to read the critique from the committee on our city attorney's opinion. And I wanted to be able to do that justice, to take the time and the space I needed to carefully review and go back and forth on this issue. I understand that my vote today is, you know, not going to change the outcome one way or the other, but I did want to take a moment to explain this for myself and for all those here and for the committee. So for me, this issue is not clear-cut like minimum wage. When I looked at that, we clearly had requirement in the state statute 410 for the framing of the charter specifically around the actual structure and organization and administration of the city government. And the minimum wage piece to me is a business regulation. It's something that is covered under our general welfare powers and is something that could be enacted by ordinance, but is not a proper fit for the city charter. And so I would agree with Ms. Siegel's legal opinion on that, that that's really an ordinance in disguise as a charter amendment. On this, however, at first blush, my take was it's around administration of the city specific to employees. So I went back and forth on this a number of times, especially after getting a chance to read Susan Siegel's opinion and the response as well. And I just want to be very clear, I have my concerns with the idea itself. I see technical issues with implementation. I'm concerned about unintended consequences with it. I'm concerned about the actual practicality of if it's going to have any effect, should it get on the ballot, should it get passed. But that's not the question before us today. It's really about the legal questions. So I just wanted to speak to three pieces where I had the most trouble and how I got to where I am today on it. The first was really around the conflict with the indemnification statute. And I would agree with Ms. Siegel on the fact that the language that was submitted to us is, especially at first blush, overly broad. And I think that it's easy to view it as requiring more comprehensive insurance. But upon closer look, and again, the question isn't whether or not I think the language is perfect. On closer look, I felt that this was actually not in conflict with our state statutes, in that there is room in there for it to cover incidents where the officers act in willful negligence or are working outside the scope of their duty. The second was with the negotiations in PRLA, and specifically about unilateral negotiations. And I feel that after looking at both opinions on this, I would take the broader view of the law and that the law is really there to prohibit cities and municipalities from union busting or prohibiting union activity and negotiations, and that in good faith we could negotiate with the police union on specific terms with this. The last was really on claims history. That was probably my biggest hangup, this thought that we oftentimes have a lot of people go fishing for money with settlements. And I've seen it, we've all been there, all council members have been in these settlement cases, and we absolutely feel that the officer did nothing wrong, and it was just a case of somebody's out there looking for this money. You know what? To be good source of taxpayer dollars, it's just easier to give a person a few thousand dollars than to spend $50,000 or $100,000 in resources, fighting this out, taking the officers off the street, having them go through court and all that. And this is pretty common, my understanding is, with a lot of settlements. It's a nuisance payment. And so my concern was around the officers, because of their claim history on insurance, ultimately having to pay higher premiums as a result of settlements, and if that would conflict with our specific requirements. And I was reminded that our officers actually have to say whether or not they agree with a settlement. And so an officer has the opportunity to say, "I don't agree with this," and to go through with the trial, which in that case would then allow them to prevent their claims from going up due to any sort of case where somebody is ultimately fishing for money. So this wasn't clear-cut. It may very well, when you legally challenge it to the committee, it may very well lose in court, but I don't know. I don't know that. And my job isn't to decide that, that's ultimately for the courts to decide. So when quoting from our city attorney's opinion, "The city council has a ministerial duty to place the measure on the ballot unless the proposed amendment is in conflict with any statutory or constitutional provisions." And I just simply could not find a clear-cut case of that. And so the sole question is whether this proposal satisfies this legal standard, and the council must craft a ballot and transmit the proposal to the county auditor, therefore. So because I couldn't find any clear conflict with state statute, and because I think this is ultimately going to be decided by the courts, therefore, I congratulate the committee on getting the petition signatures required, and I will be voting no today because I believe that this matter should be put on ballot.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually wanted to speak on all three of them, and I was thinking we might take them one at a time, but I'll try to follow the lead of my colleagues maybe and speak about the entire committee's recommendations, and maybe I'll go in order. And I did speak at committee of the whole on the first item, which has to do with the minimum wage ballot initiative, and will certainly stay with my position then, which was this is something that it's actually our obligation and duty as council members to put on the ballot. I looked at 410, and I looked at what we should base our decision on, and it was pretty clear there were three things, and one of them was, was this a properly formatted petition? Yes. Did this have the sufficient number of registered voters validated who signed it? Yes. The second thing that I thought was incredibly important was, does this comply with 410? And is it something that we can put in the charter? And clearly, I believe that it is. I think that might be where there is some difference of opinion. I will admit that it might seem more properly and a better fit as an ordinance. I might prefer it as an ordinance, because then it will only take seven votes to amend it or not to, but nobody was proposing it as an ordinance, and it's also perfectly fine to be in the charter. It's a little bit like when we discuss whether tomatoes are fruits or vegetables. Well, we'll have scientists who are really clear on what they're and what they aren't, and perhaps it's even more ambiguous than the tomato issue, because there are seeds in tomatoes, and I guess it's a done deal, but there aren't seeds in this. It's not clear whether it has to be a charter or not, or has to be an ordinance. In fact, if you look at the history of our charter, before we had a zoning code, lots of things were put into our charter that were very much minutia, which were very different. We had things about loaf of bread, about horses, about swimming in the beaches, a lot of those issues. And when we decided it was maybe time to take some of those out and decide they're better off as an ordinance, it wasn't a court telling us they were illegal to be in there. We didn't go to a judge and talk to them about it. We didn't even vote on it up here. We went to the voters and said, "People, would you, voters, could you help determine if this is better as an ordinance or a charter?" And those things were removed, most of them were removed. We actually had to go back later and fuss about the sales of food and liquor in bars and restaurants, and whether that should be in the charter or not as well. Clearly, giving the city council authority to set a minimum wage is a scheme and framework of government, and that's what 410 says the charter discussions are about. So the last thing has to do with the preemption, and I don't think there's a preemption in the Constitution, federal constitution, state constitution, or in state statutes that says cities can't set a minimum wage, or we can't. In fact, the federal government sets one, the state sets one. Clearly, there's no preemption. That doesn't even seem to be a point of contention here. It seems all be around this issue of, does it properly belong in the charter or in an ordinance? It can go in both, and so that's not our job. Just imagine if suddenly we're going to base all charter amendments on whether the council who's there at the time is more comfortable with them being in the charter or in an ordinance. That's going to mean that the whole petitioning process is meaningless, and it's moot, and why bother to do that? Because if you need to get the seven votes, whether it's more appropriate as an ordinance or a charter, well, then they're going to stop, we, as long as I'm here, are going to stop any charter amendment that comes forward, because we can say we believe it's more appropriate as an ordinance. So I think it's my obligation and duty simply to approve ballot language and let this move forward to the next level. And if the voters decide that it should be an ordinance, well, vote it down, keep it out of the charter then. That's why we have elections, and that's what the charter is for, and that's what the charter amendment process is for. So I have to check speaker management here, because my sense is if I'm actually talking on the three issues, that would be 21 minutes, but I'll try to keep it down a little bit since I know that we're trying to wrap it all into one comment. Because I also wanted some time to talk about the police insurance, and I also wanted some time to at least mention the third item on the agenda, too. So very briefly, I'll try to hit this seven-minute mark, but that's only 2 minutes and 23 seconds from now. With the police insurance issue, I think there maybe are some fears that somehow that we can't do this without somehow violating state statutes. I don't think that was ever the intention of the initiators and the proposals of this ordinance, and when I looked at all the concerns, and when I looked at the statutes, and I looked at the proposal, I saw there's easy pathways to make sure, however it's implemented, it complies with all the state rules and regulations that are in there. That was always the intention, and it can be easily done. So based on that, it's hard for me to say that there's any clarity that this is violating or has to, and is demanding that we violate state law. And of course, we don't want to violate state law, and I don't believe that the petitioners want us to violate state law either. I think we all recognize it's our duty to indemnify the employees of the I think that we all recognize it's our duty to indemnify the employees of the city and we should when they're working appropriately, following the policies and guidance of the city, and we want to do that. And that we can find a way, if this were to go on the ballot and if it passes, we can find a way to do that. It doesn't violate any of the state statutes. So I believe there it's also my duty and the criteria I've identified for myself to allow this to move forward on the ballot and approve the ballot language. Just 58 seconds because I do, the third item I'm very excited about, which is setting these new goals for our workforce. And I know that isn't a big deal necessarily, as big a deal for our discussion right here. And it could end up not being a very big deal, but if we're actually able to do that, it could be. We've had a lot of trouble diversifying our workforce across the board. We've had a lot of trouble setting goals for ourselves and say we want to do it. This is the first time since I've been on the council, and I think we've talked about this now for about 10 years, where we're going to set goals and we're going to say we want to get to a point where the people who work for city government in the city of Minneapolis reflect, demographically speaking, the close anyway, the racial and gender makeup of the city of Minneapolis. And we're approving the goals and also I think we're making a commitment and there's a plan in place to help us get there. So I really appreciate that coming forward. And my time's up. I did it in seven minutes.
Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No on number two. Aye on number one and three.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
So it's a little more complicated, I think, for me. So I just want to be clear. And let me, no clerk, if you don't understand this. But number one, I'm voting no on the passage of a resolution concurring with the legal findings. I would like to vote yes on the ballot language and yes on the staff direction directing the city coordinated to work with the stakeholders. Is that clear? Or do I have to vote no on the whole thing? It seemed like there were three separate votes on number one. If I'm wrong. Can I get some clarity on what we're voting on?
You're voting no on 1.1. You're voting yes on 1.2.
Okay, I'm on target. And I'm voting yes on 1.3. You don't have to talk about them. Then I'd like to vote no on 2.1. And I would like to vote yes on 2.2, which I'm assuming is where we place the ballot And then I would like to vote yes on number three, both 3.1.
Cottlem.
Mr. Clerk, I am voting no on items 1.1 and 1.3. I am voting yes for item 1.2 to approve the ballot language for $15 hour minimum wage. On item number two, I only see one item, and I am voting no on that item.
There's the second item on the ballot language.
Okay, I'm online on the city's.
It's in your pocket.
If I may.
Councilmember Glidden would like to clarify why the ballot language is not on the agenda. Councilmember Glidden.
So when I introduced the second item, I added the ballot language because we did not move that during the committee. So that's why it was not on the agenda.
Okay, so the ballot language would be item 2.2 on this?
Correct.
My understanding. Alrighty, so 2.1 is a no and 2.2 is a yes.
And number three?
Yes, on number three.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
I have 13 ayes on Cal's report number three, having to do with the strategic workforce planning on item number one, having to do with the petition for minimum wage. I have 11 ayes. I have, on item 1.1, I have nos from councilmembers Gordon and Kano. I have on 1.2 unanimous support for approval of the ballot language. And I have on item 1.3, one no from councilmember Kano on item 1.3. On item two, which has to do with the petition for police insurance requirements as a charter amendment, I have 11 ayes. I have one nay. And I have councilmember Gordon and Kano voting no.
Please let the clerk do the call. Roll call.
I have councilmember Johnson voting no. I have councilmembers Gordon and Kano voting no on 2.1. And I have council, I have all councilmembers voting yes on 2.2 except councilmember Andrew Johnson.
And Mr. Clerk, councilmember Andrew Johnson would like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Clerk. I would just like my vote on 2.2 amended to be aye, but on 2.1, I'll stay with nay.
Madam President, there are 13 ayes then on item 2.2, the ballot language for the charter petition on police professional liability insurance.
Any further? Seeing the vote, those items pass. Next, we have Community Development Regulatory Services report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 15 items for approval today. Item number one is the Women's Club.
See you in court. 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 See you in court.
an out-of-date system. The amount is $9.8 million over the 12 and a half years. And the fourth item is authorizing a contract with SMG for police department to provide law enforcement services in the neighborhoods adjacent to US Bank Stadium. It's authorizing an amendment to that contract, altering the start date of the agreement to July 22, 2016. And I will move all four items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration. All items are the regularly seasonal activities of the department and projects of the department. With the exception of two and three, two is authorizing the sale of excess granite pavers from Nicklet Mall. And item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25, and decreasing participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration. All items are the regularly seasonal activities of the department and projects of the department. With the exception of two and three, two is authorizing the sale of excess granite pavers from Nicklet Mall. And item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25, and decreasing participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice Chair Andrew Johnson will give the report.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration. All items are the regularly seasonal activities of the department and projects of the department. With the exception of two and three, two is authorizing the sale of excess granite pavers from Nicklet Mall. And item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25, and decreasing participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice Chair Andrew Johnson will give the report.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And next, we have the Regulation of Intentional Communities Ordinance. Councilmember Gordon pursuant to notice, councilmember Gordon and Goodman introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services and Zoning and Planning Committees, providing for the regulation of intentional communities. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And next, we have a motion by councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, amending provisions related to consuming in public. Unanimous consent is required on that. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Unanimous consent was obtained. We have resolutions. 2016 National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month honorary resolution. 2016 Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month honorary resolution. 2016 Faith's Lodge Day honorary resolution. 2016 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month honorary resolution. And 2016 General Emiliano Zabada honorary resolution. Any discussion on those resolutions? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Unanimous consent was obtained. We have resolutions.